It is funny.
My laptop's way too big to drag there.
All right, we're all set? Sorry about that. Good evening and welcome to the first budget meeting for January 5th. If you'd kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Paul, how do you want to, we're just going to approach this one at a time, but do you want to start things off?
Yeah, I'll give you a sentiment for the whole budget process here. You're going to see, I passed out earlier tonight trying to just look at things in a different light by departments. So I passed out a bunch of these spreadsheets in each department. And what we did is we broke them out into three categories. We broke it out into percent for personnel cost, for all other costs, and for capital outlay in each department. So it gives you a bird's eye view of where the money in that department goes and what it goes for. No surprise that, as you'll see, most of our departments are personal service heavy. I think there's only one or two departments that personal service is less than 60% and one of them's highway. And of course, we have the big $2 million bond in highway. Another one is Parks and Rec. We only have two full-time employees and we do a lot out of that. And the third one is building and grounds and we have $150,000 upgrade to the sprinklers, which is a heavy capital outlay for a department with only two full-time personnel. We had some challenges this year with health insurance. Health insurance went up double digits. I think it was over 11% increase in health insurance this year. That's what the trend is. Coming out of COVID, a lot of people now are using elective surgeries and things of that sort. So you'll see that in everybody. You're going to see a decrease in most departments for New Hampshire retirement system. They actually went down a little bit this year. So you'll see a decrease there in personal service with that. And then the ones that have union contracts, you'll see their personal services increased. Everybody else is basically flatlined. The ones who are in contract right now are mostly just in the police department, police officers and Teamsters, which is DPW, but police officers and then dispatchers union for the police department. And then in DPW, which is highway, wastewater, solid waste, equipment maintenance. They have, the Teamsters has a contract, so you'll see some slight increases there in wages. Other wage adjustments are by people that we brought in that more skilled than what was in the position or more experienced. So we had to boost up the salaries in a couple of them and you'll see that tonight in assessing. But overall, like I said before, this is a 21% 21 cent increase for the budget. All other costs, including personal service and all other excluding capital, is about a 1.7% increase throughout the whole budget. We're doing a lot of cap and projects that we have been putting off for a long time. Hence, the sprinkler system project, a couple of paving projects, and then some more money into paving to offset the safer grant. Because when we took over the safer grant, I want the fire department, with the fire department, we wanted to slowly increase the tax rate so that we're not getting hit in that third year at a big jump. So we've been putting money aside. This year in this best budget, it was for the 800 megahertz system. Next year it will be for paving. So we're putting it into non-recurring items that we're trying to get what we need done with on those things. Another big increase this year in the budget you'll see is a gas station, DPW garage, the tanks, the gas tanks and all the equipment. When we did the bond upgrade, we were able to replace the pumps themselves. We weren't able to replace any of the conduit or the wiring or the tanks at that time. However, I'm proposing that we offset that cost by using fund balance to offset that cost for those pumps. So that will, you'll see that later on. But tonight, we have a sleep assessing town clerk. They're here. Departments are here to discuss your budgets, but it'll be pretty much a theme with these departments that they're flatlined if not lower than what they were a year before. And if there is an increase, it's a small increase or the increase is due to union contract or things of that sort. So.
Yeah, Paul, I think I'd rather you say, instead of we're trying to slowly increase the tax rate, what we're doing is actually replacing the revenues that will be utilized to pay for that safer grant. And we're just filling with projects every one time so that, and of course, if we can keep the tax rate even lower, that's the plan.
Right. Yeah, we're trying, we're trying not to have a huge jump when we lose the federal money with those five departments. Yes, that is correct. That's a more elegant way to say it.
Well, there's one way of provoking trouble and another way of not. So, but thanks, Paul. Barbara?
Also, as we're going through the budget and we come to those line items where we have to go out and purchase material like salt, asphalt, whatever. If you could tell us, you know, those particular items are being affected by the economy right now, seeing how everything, including grocery and especially eggs, have increased in costs lately. So.
Will do. Thanks. All right. Does anybody have anything further for Paul? Then we'll go right up to assessing and Tom's going to do assessing. Hi, Tom.
Good evening.
Oh, and just before we get started, everybody here knows that Tom Koenig will be here. He's just stuck up in Manchester on his way down now.
Okay, so we're going to start with assessing, start you with something fairly easy. It's, this is a, this is a pretty straightforward budget when you compare it to the prior year. Overall, there's an increase of $19,000 in appropriations for this department. 10,000 of that are personnel-related. When our field assessor resigned this year, we went out and hired a much more experienced individual, came to us from the state, worked as an appraiser for the state. And we had to increase the wages for that, for that position. So between the wages and the benefits for that one position, that accounts for about $10,000 of the $19,000 increase. There's $4,000 increase in health insurance. As Paul mentioned, you're going to see that as a recurring theme in all departments as that cost went up by 11% plus. There was also a newly negotiated contract with our contract assessing company. And that resulted in an increase to that contract of $4,000 per year. So that's 18 of the $19,000 that this budget went up. The remaining $1,000 is made up of a number of different items that reflect the general inflationary increases in supplies and fuel for the field assessor who travels throughout the town as part of their job on a daily basis, insurance, telephone, things like that. So that's kind of a quick review of a relatively straightforward budget. But if you have further questions about any of the changes, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Everybody all set? Good. All right. That's good for now, Tom. I think we're all set there.
Okay.
Next. Thank you. Town clerk tax collector. Good evening, Diane. Number 24. Take it away, Diane. When you're ready.
It's not on right yet.
Not on. Okay, I see the green light. For those watching at home, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the town clerk tax collector. With me tonight is Brenda Dulong, who is the deputy town clerk tax collector. Our budget that we have submitted is similar to previous year's submission. I'm sorry? Wow. Usually I'm told to quiet now. This year's budget is very similar to past budget submitted by the department with the exception of last year when we requested a full-time position. As Paul mentioned, 85% of the department's budget is personnel-related and the other 15% is operating cost. The good news is this year's budget is proposed to be lower than last year. And the reason for this, and it gives me great anxiety to do this, is we are not going to move forward in filling that part-time position that you so graciously gave us last year, the full-time position, sorry. The reason for this is twofold. One, as you all know, the bottom has fallen out of the auto industry right now. And all projections are that it's going to be several years before things pick back up. Our foot traffic has been low for new cars. And so what we are seeing in foot traffic is the new residents coming in. And right now, we're able to handle those new residents. The second primary reason for not funding the position is due to some technological changes. Last year, Councilor Hunter had some good questions and concerns when we were explaining some of the reasoning why we needed added personnel. And since that time, there have been some changes that have come forward with our programs that we're using. One of them has to do with the financial reporting for our motor vehicles, our dog licenses, and our vital record transactions. We are not seeing the volume of chargebacks and returned rejected ACH payments. So we're not spending a huge portion of time chasing after those, doing the record-keeping, contacting customers, turning them over to the police department if we need to. So that's improved dramatically. The, there has been changes with our tax kiosk on the tax side. We transitioned to a new vendor for our online presence. And the new site appears to be much easier for our residents to use and more intuitive. It allows a resident to set up an account and to be notified when tax bills are released. Our presence of payments or our volume of payments has increased tremendously over the last couple of years. And just with this past tax cycle, we've noticed we gained about 1.5% increase over the last cycle, just with our residents using it. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot, but where our volume is currently at about 8% of our collections, but it's a huge impact to our staff and our processing. So it is having an effect. The other thing with our kiosk that's been a tremendous change and advantage for us is an actual copy of the tax bill is posted on the website. We're not getting the calls or can you send me a duplicate bill? How can I access this information? They're going to the website and they're getting the information themselves. And that whole aspect has dramatically dropped. So the other thing with the customers paying their taxes online is we're seeing some increase in credit card transactions for payment and the bounce checks for taxes has dramatically dropped as well. We have a couple of new projects in the works that are coming for processing our online transactions for motor vehicles and dog licenses. It's called bulk processing. Brenda is actually in charge of implementing that project. I've delegated that to her and she can answer any questions about it. But my understanding is it will allow the staff to just select checkboxes and to select which vehicles are being renewed and stickers will be auto-assigned. So Brenda can probably explain that a little bit more if you have questions. But that's another reduction in what our staff needs to do on a daily basis. And we're hoping with all of these changes that are coming and improvements with software, that even once the vehicles do start rolling off the assembly lines and the car market does pick up, that we'll be able to handle that with these changes, things that we're not doing down the road. I'm sorry? Barcodes. Yeah, we have barcode scanners now that will, that allow us to scan the driver's license barcode, which populates the information right into the registration or title application that we're processing, which will significantly cut down on errors. I think you may recall, I've told you before, that if we make a mistake on a car registration and have to call the DMV to back it out, it's about 45 minutes for them to do that before the clerk can start the transaction over again. And that's going to be helpful with us as well. So those are our big changes for why we're reducing personnel, but there are some changes in our personnel. The town manager did put in a wage increase for our clerical staff. You'll see that reflected in the budget. Our wages have lagged behind other communities and this is an effort to try to retain employees and to even out the discrepancy, I guess, if you will, between towns. And then other minor changes are just in the budget adjusted where they were needed. We removed the temporary funding for the temporary part-time person that was elections-related for the last election cycle. In our printing, our 82, I've got to put my glasses on here, 8220 account, paper costs have significantly increased, we're finding. And even just filling orders, there were delays of several months, we're told, to get our envelope orders or our form orders. So we did increase our printing, printing budget by $1,000. And then the other minor change, maintenance office equipment, there's a minor increase for our clerk software package. And then in dog licenses, again, you know, less than $300, $275, but that's due to cost of materials. Other than that, those are the changes and I'm happy or we're happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Everybody good?
My question. Yeah, I'll just say, I, you know, I made a comment last year when you're here, and I can't believe it's already been a year, that I would like to come down and see the system from the online. And I was actually going to challenge a state rep to come with me so, you know, we could work this inefficiency at the state level. But I'm glad to hear that it's moving in the right direction. And if you think about the growth of Merrimack, the fact that your apartment is efficient enough that we can drop that part-time head, I think that goes a long ways to showing that we're being very good steward of the taxpayers' money. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I still plan to try to get down there. I can't believe it's been a year already.
We welcome any of you to come at any time.
Thanks.
And I do appreciate as well the pulling that back because it's always been the belief with technology that as we continue to change our ways of doing business, it would have a benefit on the personnel angle. And so that's.
I can tell you that I had great anguish or anxiety over doing it because not knowing the future. And as you know, I, we struggled for many years and put in many requests for staffing and to finally have it happen and then have to turn around and say, well, now this, now these things that we wanted to have happen, especially like Counselor Hunter said with technology are here. It's like, ah, you know, do we give it up or not? But as a taxpayer and as a department head, I can't, I can't justify it. And I just can't say, oh, we're going to hire somebody because we have them. And I think it is hopefully going to keep moving with the technology in the right direction for us. Yep.
Great. So everybody all set? All right. Thanks, Brenda. Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
Next media, we have Nicholas and Justin here to look here.
You get us both tonight? Bonus. For those watching on Merrimack TV, I'm Nicholas LaValle, the Town of Merrimack's Media Services Coordinator. With me is our Assistant Media Services Coordinator, Justin Slez. And you have in front of you the, our proposed budget for the media division. Folks at home may know us better as Merrimack TV. So there's, we're not proposing any new positions. And the budget is pretty much, there's a slight decrease into what it is in this current fiscal year. Most notably, there's a decrease in the 8271 line item, which is subscriptions. And that decrease is reflective of our dedicated branded Merrimack TV app. That's going to come online within the next couple of months. That's going to be a streaming app that's available across all streaming platforms. Any device, your phone, streaming device, Roku or Apple TV, you could just download Merrimack TV and you'll be able to watch all of our content on any of those devices, which is exciting. But there was a one-time cost to establish and create that bit of software. And the annual upkeep of it is significantly lower. So that $10,000 in this current fiscal year would be decreased to $3,000 is for the annual upkeep. The other line item that, that, next line item would be 8504, which is office equipment. Our equipment is typically production equipment. And this current fiscal year, we've invested $40,000 in the public portion of our channels and our services. And next year, we're looking to propose the same investment of $40,000 towards what we call remote or mobile studio production equipment. And it's essentially to add additional capabilities to some of the events that we cover, whether that's sports, concerts, or community events, ceremonies, that sort of thing. Justin could speak more on the equipment itself, if you, if you'd like to know more, have more specifics. Yeah, off-site meetings, sure. Budget committees, school budget committee.
Concerts, sports.
You name it.
You name it.
Yeah. That's generally it. If you have any questions, love to hear them.
I know we're going to be talking about revenues, but how's, how's that looking as far as the franchise fee?
I have them in front of me here. Tom provided for me this afternoon, so thanks, Tom. But the, this year, or 2122, was $396,239 from Comcast.
Which is about a $70,000 more than what they spent. So $70,000 went into fund balance. Great. Thank you.
Do we have what was the year before, just as a comparison?
$384,000.
That's a little bit more interesting.
It's been as.
Just by the number of.
New people.
New people coming in.
Number of new people. And I'm often surprised at how many people still have the cable TV portion of their cable bill. And we often reiterate this is that these franchise fees are 3.75% of gross annual revenues from Merrimack cable subscribers, but it's just the cable portion of your Comcast Xfinity bill. So it's, we don't see revenue from the internet side of things.
Just to give you perspective, old people like me, I can say that, nobody else can say that.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're not as familiar, we're not as familiar with the individual apps, the discoveries and all that stuff. So we just stick with the regular cable because it's too confusing otherwise. You end up paying multiple streaming services.
Right.
And it's like, when you start adding it up.
It gets expensive.
It's like new cable.
Yeah.
Basically.
And a lot of the stuff that's available on them is available through cable.
Right.
It's just maybe a day later.
And I've heard a lot of that this year. There were a couple of phone calls I received from residents who told me that I don't play the school board meetings enough. There's two calls in particular, nearly identical calls, different people. You don't play the school board meetings enough. And I said, do you not enjoy the tomahawk football and basketball games? And she said, no, that's great. I just want to be able to see the school board. And when I pointed her that it was online, this resident said, I don't do iPad. Okay.
I'm not that bad.
Right. So there is such a large portion of people who still watch cable. So we don't write those residents off. In fact, we kind of, Justin and I is sort of, you know, thinking ahead, it's almost like you have to look at the population is two different groups, right? There's older residents who still watch cable.
That's right.
Still, it's appointment TV to them. And that's how they're going to watch their programs. And then there's younger residents who.
Do the apps.
Do the opposite. And we want the media division, we want Merrimack TV to stay as relevant as possible. So when the older population maybe moved to a warmer climate and the younger folks are still here, they're going to watch their Merrimack TV via the apps. Yeah, it's, it really is sort of, I think I've said this the past couple of years, we're community media is at a crossroads. But it's just a matter of just maintaining relevancy and making sure that you can be found in all these places. We want Merrimack TV on cable. We want people to be able to find us on those devices, the same device that they're downloading Netflix on. We want Merrimack TV right next to that. Justin and I, you know, we feel what we do is important and the meetings that we cover and now adding things like sports and concerts and community events, it's truly keeping residents informed and finding ways for residents to become engaged. And hopefully, especially with the winds that the tomahawks have been having, creating some civic pride. So that's what we're here for.
Great job, Tom.
So can you just, excuse me, on 8504 office equipment, we keep spending $55,000 each year. Can you talk about the future? Are you expecting to do that because you're replacing old equipment all the time? Or do you see that number fluctuating down the road somewhere? Or?
It could. I could see it fluctuating. For us, it just seems to be the sweet spot based on, you know, what the needs of the town are at that time and the things that we're looking to do and things that are, you know, different projects that are being asked of us. There's a few different things that could drastically change that number one way or the other. In our CIP, we've continuously put off low-power FM radio, adding a radio component to our services. It's something that neighboring towns have. Bedford has low-power FM. Manchester has low-power FM. We'd love to be able to add that. So that number could drastically, you know, that sort of number could drastically change the equipment line item. But right now, I feel that that's just about, that's where it's been between $40,000 and $55,000 the past couple of years.
So without adding, excuse me, without adding low-power FM or something like that, do you think $45,000, $50,000 is about the maintenance requirement?
I think so.
To just keep things up to date?
Absolutely. That's, that's, that's basically the number. The other thing too is we want to replace our cable cast system every six, between six and 10 years as well. So depending on where that falls in the CIP, that could change it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And the other thing is, is that with technology changes, like Diane was talking about, technology changes in town clerk tax collector, with technology changes and, you know, people cutting the cords and these apps and things of that sort, we got to, you know, it's a lot quicker turnaround. It's no longer a five, seven, 10-year before you have to replace some stuff. Some stuff is on a three-year replacement because the technology is that old, that quick. So the 55 is where we discussed, and that is our sweet spot, is 55. 50, between $45,000 and $55,000 is the sweet spot in media to get what we need done. Fifty, between forty-five and $55,000 is, is the sweet spot in media to get what we need done on a yearly basis.
Thank you.
All right, well said. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next, community development. Evening, Tim.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My pleasure to be here to present my 12th budget to you folks. Yes, it's number 12. And as I usually can submit, my budget is very similar to it has the previous year. It's actually down about $3,730, just a little less than 1% from last year. Again, it's essentially level funded. There's no significant changes to any of the line items throughout the budget. Though if you have any particular questions, I'm certainly welcome to answer those questions. Just a couple of things, as I typically do during these opportunities, just to give you a little bit of recap as to what happened in the previous year. Looking at the land use boards, we saw an increase of six agenda items. We had 130 agenda items between the two boards, the planning board and the zoning board this year, which is up six from last year. Although the time spent staffing those board meetings by my staff and I decreased from about sixty-one and a half hours to 51 hours. So the meetings were dealing with more things, but the meetings seem to be running a little bit more efficiently. Both boards have made the decision to move up their meeting times to 6:30 PM. So there's a hope to try to get more done before we hit that late night period where things don't get accomplished as efficiently. That's been a pretty good change so far. Announcing my sixth assistant planner during my 12 years here. Casey Wolf resigned back in September and I'm pleased to announce that Colleen Olson has taken her position. Colleen is a very young, new professional, is currently actually looking at earning her college degree currently online and has some previous experience doing some land use clerk work for a couple of small towns. So she knows how meetings work. She knows the lingo. But there is a little bit of a training and learning curve for her to come up to speed with the position. I would like to say that, I know that six planners in 12 years sounds like a lot. This department, I'm very proud to say, has been a really good training ground for some very highly competent professionals. I have a list in front of me just to go down through. The first assistant planner I had when I started here was Jeff Morissette. He's now the Director of Land Use Management in Westford, Mass. Donna Benton, formerly Donna Polley, is now the Director of Planning and Community Development for the City of Dover. Gillian Harris, who was our Planning and Zoning Administrator a few years ago, is now the Assistant Planning Director for the Town of Bedford. Robert Price obviously moved up from Assistant Planner, is now our current Planning and Zoning Administrator. Kelly Karen, who was known as Kelly Shamel when she was here, is now in what is the longest title of any of my former employees, Assistant Town Manager slash Director of Economic Development slash Town Planner in Londonderry. And then Casey Wolf, our most recent, is now the Town Planner for the Town of Epping. I'm extremely proud of the people and the quality of employees that I've had in the department over the time that I've been here. And yes, it, it stinks to have to go out and try to find replacements. But I'm very proud and it's one of my biggest joys as a development director, a community development director and a professional, to be able to provide that opportunity for these young professionals so they can move on and become successful in their careers. So just wanted to say, yes, I know there's a lot of turnover, but it's really good people and there's a reason for it. The biggest thing that I'm, would say is the biggest disappointment that we haven't been able to really get to. As you know, we've done a lot of work on our zoning ordinance and completely revamped our site plan regulations a few years ago. The subdivision regulation rewrite is kind of in a state of flux right now. The majority of work that needs to be done currently is in the engineering standards associated with roadway and infrastructure. And given the current staffing situation with Public Works and the uncertainty as to where we're gonna be with engineer and director and whatnot, I need that guidance from that, the staff there to know what the, the overall goals and objectives are. I do hope to potentially utilize the services of our peer review consultant, Fussin O'Neil, to help with some of the development of that work. But I still need that goal, the overall goal of what the overall standard should be coming from the department level before we get to that. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get that process started when we get some new staff in the Public Works Department. But like I said, it's been a pleasure and a joy to work for the community and I look forward to doing it for a while to come.
Very good. Tom?
So based on that last comment, would you need additional budgeting to hire outside consultants?
No, I actually have enough money within my existing consultant line. It's not a line item that I generally use, but it's always there in, in the event that I need it. So I've had some preliminary conversations with the folks at Fussin O'Neil. And given, once I have the overall direction from Public Works as to what that work needed to be done, I think I can easily make it work within the existing budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Why are you painless?
Thank you. Awesome job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
We go with general governments?
That was a cruel joke. I was just gonna commend the town councillor for moving this right along. I really appreciate it. Hopefully you can continue through ours. So we'll start with, well, for the people.
That's number five, by the way.
Chief Brian LeVain, Deputy Chief Matt Charles with me. As per usual, I just go by line item, but there are some changes. In the communications budget, there's really not many changes.
No, communications.
Communications, oh five. I have both of them. To start with, eight-three-three-four, maintenance office equipment. You'll see there's a significant jump in NICSIL. That was under-reported in years past and the usage of NICSIL, we're gaining, we're using it more and more and more. So there's actually an increase in fee there by a little bit. And then you see the RMS annual fee, we're outside of our year by then of a year of the free service. So that's gonna be your annual fee moving forward. And then there's an interface between image trend and RMS. Image trend is what the fire department uses for the ambulance, the ambulance reporting. So that's a yearly fee so that the two can talk to each other. So RMS can populate their image trend fields. And then we move down to eight-three-three-five, maintenance communications equipment. That's part of the going to the 800 system that we spoke about last year, the yearly fees of the system upgrade agreement and annual preventive maintenance. It's anticipated that Motorola will be tacking on about 15% charge, so it'll be going up 15%. That's all I have for changes in the communication side of things. You have any questions about the communication budget?
Are we happy with the 800 megahertz system?
So we are. We're using it in some places. It's really kind of comforting when we build the other site up on Whitetail where it could be going.
Yeah.
So that's when it'll be operational fully across town. But we have used it for area towns that we have had issues with radio coverage, mostly this whole time.
And when will that be done?
Well, that's a good question. Gonna say hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay.
There's a lot of moving parts the town manager knows about it. Just a lot of things that need to happen for this to come to fruition.
All right, now police is number four.
Ready, Nancy? So police budget, I'll start off with the overtime, the eight-one-one-one item. Increased overtime by 160 hours, just to reflect the mandatory change by police standards in increasing the annual hours for police officers to have. Per LEAC Commission that was formed, they recommend eventually we get to 24 hours a year of annual training, not to include our use of force training and firearms training. So, but next year, we're required to go at least 10 hours of training, which we're gonna be more focusing towards that 20-hour mark just because I think it's important that the officers have, have continuing training throughout the year. And moving down to eight-two-zero-three, operating supplies. You'll notice a decrease in the ammunition line from the year, prior year, of $15,000. As we were preparing for the budget, we started getting some quotes about what ammunition was gonna be costing in the future. And we found out that we were at the tail end of the window of estate contract to purchase ammunition. This year was some personnel savings that the town manager agreed to. And we're gonna be saving 30% there. So ammunition across the board is gonna be going up 30%. So we thought it was prudent to buy as much as we could this year at the lower cost, saving about $7,500 for the town. But we still have other supplies that we need to buy, such as Taser cartridges and stuff like that. Eight-two-zero-four, uniforms, ballistic vests. Every five years, we rotate through our vests. This is the year that a bulk of our officers will need to have their vest replaced. And for everyone at home, just realize that this is a matching grant to the federal government, so we pay half. There's a slight increase this year in vests, so it's about $500 per vest. And we have 23 offices that need replacement, plus we have five that we'll be putting on as do hires. So that's the increase there. And we'll go over to dues and fees, eight-two-seven-zero. There's a new fee that was added there, log, dog license lookup. That's so we can, our officers can log, dispatch can log online to access the database at the town clerk's office. And that's $600 a year fee. So if we find a dog, you know, with tags on, we can run the tag and find out where the owner is rather than just dropping off the rescue league and following up the next day off hours. And then you'll also see the Southern Hampshire Special Operations Unit. That's the 5,000 a year fee that I've already spoke to you about. And I will say that we have used them on a call out and it was, it was the optimal performance and a pleasure to work with those gentlemen, so we're really happy with joining that team. And just a small increase under eight-three-three-four for Power D and MS. That's a yearly fee that goes up, I think, two and a half percents per year. That's where we house all of our documents, training documents, access to forms and such. And it's really leans us more towards, looking towards accreditation down the road. The eight-three-five-two, job-related training seminars. As I've said years, you know, several years I've been saying this is that, you know, training is not, is not free anymore. You know, the academy is strapped with staff. They don't do a lot of free training up there. So we really have to outsource our training to other companies that provide it. So I'd like to increase that by $5,000. And eight-four-three-zero, Dog Pound, just want to increase the schools and seminars from $200 to, by $400 to $600. We have a new animal patrol officer, Pete Uliano, and he's, he's found some really interesting schools. It's really gonna better his performance and they're running about $200, $300 each, so. And other operating expenses, eight-four-six-zero. You'll see additional $2,000 for blood draws at hospitals. Over the last couple of years, we've been getting charged for blood draws at hospitals. So if we have someone that's suspected of DVOI or the injured in DVOI crash where we request a blood draw, we're now getting billed from some select hospitals. Some hospitals don't bill us. But, so that's where you see that fee there. And lastly, eight-five-zero-three, this is our year to, to purchase four patrol vehicles. However, speaking with the town manager, we, and the increased cost per vehicle, we decided only purchase three in this budget. Basically, the Ford Explorers went up to $43,000, which is a significant increase. And it's about $7,000 to outfit each car. So with that said, those are all the changes in the police budget.
So are you gonna be getting a fourth vehicle with other funds? Is that what we chatted about a month ago?
Correct.
Yes, with their, they have some significant personnel savings. So we're picking up the fourth vehicle this year with a lower, lower cost to the town.
Because I, for years, I've wondered why we wouldn't just, to try and stretch the cruisers a little bit. And I get it, they get worked hard. There's no doubt about it. When you're going on call, you don't want to have an issue because you got a 150,000 mile vehicle. So I understand all that. But I often wondered what it would be to, on that three, four-car year, keep it at three and get that fourth one cycled into the rotation to elongate it a little bit. Would that have a monstrous negative effect on the utilization?
I can tell you that this year is the first year that we're not feeling the effect when the cars were removed from our budget that one year. We, we made these cars last a long time to the point that other departments cringe when we hand them over. You know, the fire department, they get some and they're not in the best shape by the time we get there. So they get the life loan, you know, most cars are getting retired about 135. And at that point, you start weighing out maintenance costs versus keeping the vehicle. And we don't just look at the mileage, we look at engine hours as well, so runtime for the engine. So having that three-three-four, I think, would be the best solution.
And then the outfit, are we running lights still on the roof or do we put them inside the car?
Depends on the vehicle. We have one traffic enforcement car that has them inside the car and one, one marked vehicle has them inside the car.
Because I know the difficulty in cars change every three years. So you get a new cruiser and three years later, sometimes you can't utilize it. I didn't know if on the inside equipment, it could be retrofitted more easily as opposed to having specific widths in the roofs and so on.
We're actually finding the, the lower marked vehicles are actually saving, as a savings.
Lower marked?
Meaning, meaning if they're, if they're shadowed or gray shadowed or if they're unmarked, then it's actually less of a cost because you're not purchasing that giant light bar and tarp. Because those light bars have shelf life, right? So like, we have some light bars that have an old light bar where the takedown lights, which is the lights in the front that basically illuminate the car when you stop it. Compared to what they have now, it's like a whole scene, basically where it illuminates like fully in front versus some of the old light bars just have these like two little spots that come on and they rely more on the spotlight. So when we do a low-profile car is actually, if we're changing out the light bar, it's actually more economical.
Okay. And then that brought up my last thought, which I wasn't even thinking about. I don't like the camouflage. You know, I think, I, I don't, the shadows, like on the pickup truck, that famous pickup truck.
I've never heard anything about it.
The lettering on that, it just said police. I don't even think it said Merrimack police.
It does.
It, it does, okay. But it's so subdued and I, I'd rather our cruisers be seen. I think being visible is much more important than having the impact of sneaking up on somebody. I want, if people see what's going on, they know where their safe space is, they know what they have to do. And, and it will slow some people down if they are in fact prone to speeding, but. So that's, I, you know, I don't.
Chairman, I understand your, your position on that. And, and the other argument is, you know, people talk about how they always see people on cell phones. They always see people doing this and being reckless and distracted driving or, or they have a problem with speed and they constantly speed. And that's where we find use in the shadow cars and the traffic cars.
And I appreciate that, but I, that's, that's my thing. I don't, most people are pretty decent, law-abiding citizens. I know you got the crazies out there, but those guys eventually get caught. And to, to make sure they pay the piper, that's fair, but I just, you know, I don't know to what point I'll be pushed over the edge, but I just don't like it.
And I understand where you're coming from, Chairman. It just, how many times have you heard from friends and families, oh, why are they doing anything about this? Why are they doing anything about this? Why are they doing anything about this? The people using cell phones, you know, distracted driving. And it's because it's hard to detect when they're in a giant black and white car, right? Most people won't pay attention. And, and I will say that, you know, I know if you inquire about our warnings and tickets before, our officers are very prudent on issuing tickets to only people that deserve them.
And I appreciate that.
You know, and we're not a big ticket town and I'm glad that we never had that direction. And that's where I think that, you know, if they do get the person where, eh, they made one mistake, that they're gonna be leaning toward them.
All right. It's still in my mind, hasn't allayed my concerns. I just, I mean, I, everybody, everybody you talk to appreciates the work that our police department does. And so it's just, years ago, I haven't seen it in a long time. So I'm hoping and believing it doesn't happen anymore. But I watched one of our patrolmen 20 years ago up in the woods on Connel Boulevard, shooting people with, for radar. And I'm going, I don't, it just didn't seem appropriate for me, for my community police department, that everybody really loves and respects and so.
But I'll say this though, that, that interaction with the officer and the driver and the way they speak to each other and, you know, that engagement of, where are you coming from? I'm coming from the movies. Oh, what movie did you see? How was it? That, 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 that gets that community policing. That gets the buy-in. And it also promotes safer road rates. That's why, you know, our accidents are down. It's because we're out there doing these things. So I understand where you're coming from.
All right.
Chief, how many low-profile cars do we have besides detective and administrative staff?
We have unmarked car used by our SIU unit, which is typically the drug unit. And then we have a traffic car.
And then what car?
A traffic car, so based traffic enforcement. And then we have the pickup truck.
So we don't have a lot of them.
That's gonna last us 20 years. I already know that.
Because I know we're not gonna get one after you hit your sitting there.
You gotta get another one, that's for sure.
My wife said they retire them this year, so I don't know.
I won't be here for 20 years.
Well, thanks, Chief. Barbara?
I don't agree with you because I live on the Bedford-Merrimack Raceway, which is better known as Back River Road. So those people like fly down there all the time. You're always welcome to use my driveway. Anyways, so for the dog, the Dog Pound, what training do they get?
There's actually a certified course through the state of New Hampshire for basically anyone, animal control officers, yep. And there's other courses such as dealing with different types of animals or like you might go to a trapping course just to, so he knows what to see when it's, you know, what to trap and, you know, what's legal, what's not legal. So there's plenty of courses that he can take, take online. And he's done, he's done a really, he's really done a good job of seeking out that training, which the reason why I added to the budget, because I wasn't aware that there was that much training out there.
Also, I know you were having a lot of problems filling positions. How's it going?
It's going. So I'm happy to say that we just opened up another hiring period and it's gonna be an open enrollment. So basically, as. So basically as applications come in, we're going to reach out to the folks that are applying. So we have, uh, two right now in training that got out of the academy and we have two initial offers, so we still have a number of vacancies though. Not unlike any other department around us.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Everybody's good? All right, thanks, Chief.
Appreciate it, that was easy.
Oh, of course.
This one's easy too.
Where, where was that one, Paul? I asked you earlier. I've got it. Oh, and that's, all right, I thought it was going to be more detailed than that because it doesn't say police detail, so just next.
There's three, there, there were actually two, there's the fire outside detail and then the police outside detail. We have an outside detail rate for both departments in case they get on details. And the chief can explain a little bit more about the hours and, uh, Tom can explain how he comes up with the seventy-six thirty-one.
Yes, essentially this is a fund that, um, basically pays for the, the officer's work details. However, it's a self-supported fund where, you know, Tom comes up with a number of what, what we should be charging hourly per rate for our, the officer's work. So basically it's because they receive the payment at that week of the services, then the town gets, the billing goes through the town and they recoup that money. I'm sure Tom can say it much more eloquently.
Except, I get, does him, anybody, everybody understood the chief? Yeah, I think we're good.
How do we compare with other towns?
I do not know that answer. We can find out for you if like. If you're referring to the hourly rate, we're right about there.
All good?
I'd just like to make a comment that the health, the police department and all the police officers realize that you have the support of this council. And we realize that it's not an easy job nowadays.
They, I'm sorry. They do, and they also realize that they have the support of the entire community. I think we're very unique here, where we have that almost ninety-nine percent support. You know, we got a couple of people that like, gonna happen with us, but overall, I think that, that goes through years of community policing and the programs we have and the, the, the quality officers that we hire. You know, we always joke around in this hiring process, I make sure we tell whoever's on the roll boards, like, we don't need the best, we don't need the most qual, most certified guy with all, all these whistles. We need good people that want to be, do good things for the community, so, and that's what we try to do.
And hopefully the officers feel that support from us.
Absolutely.
Spite of the complaint about?
Oh, well, they complain about us too, so what difference does it make?
Alrighty, we're good.
Thanks, guys.
That was easy.
Thank you.
Leave before we change our mind.
Onto general government number one in the book.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Besides the, the normal slight wage adjustments and, uh, health insurance, one of the big, uh, personal service costs that went down was compensated absences. Um, as you'll remember, that compensated absences is a, is a, uh, number that is done by the number of people that will be retiring in the next year. Uh, fortunate enough, in the year twenty-three, twenty-four, that number has gone down a little bit. So we were able to decrease that by about a hundred thousand dollars. The next line item is incentives, that is eighty-one forty-three, oh, one oh one eighty-one forty-three. Um, I've increased that, um, by thirty thousand dollars and, and that is, um, to help with hiring individuals. Um, what we have in the budget sometimes, when people leave, when we get qualified people back in, we have to pay them a little more. So that is where we get that money from. Uh, Tom mentioned during assessing that, uh, you know, we had to pay, uh, an individual who was highly trained, yeah, to come in. That money came from those, that incentive line for this year. So that's where that money comes from. Um, as you know, we have a number of positions that are open right now, um, and, uh, and, uh, D P W, um, for engineer and other positions. We have an amount budgeted, if I have to go over that amount budgeted, that number would come from this thirty thousand dollar increase from this line to fifty thousand dollars. It's also to make us, keep us competitive with other communities and jobs. The town clerk, tax clerk that talked about the, uh, the ladies who are on the front lines, as I like to call them. They, they get all the residents, they take their money, they register their cars to keep them current so that we don't lose people like that. That's where that money would come from after that raise too. And then the next year would flow through the budget. Telephone expense went up fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. That is mostly due to, uh, we have, believe it or not, three years with the new phone system. So this will be our fourth year with the new phone system and that is an increase to our, uh, maintenance cost associated with the new phone system. So that went up and, and that's that fourteen thousand, some of that fourteen thousand five hundred dollars there.
Is that like a contract?
Yeah, that's a contract with, with the company, so, um, we reduced the number of hours, but just the basic maintenance contract for upgrades to the phone system and things of that sort did increase. Yep, that's, then we, 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 Jonathan and I, mostly Jonathan, um, negotiated that and that's to get that down. The reason why it was at fifteen hundred is because when we bought the phone system, we bought a three-year maintenance plan. So that was just for any extra hours we might have needed. And it came on this, in this year, this fiscal year, it's coming out, meaning the one we're budgeting and that's what the cost is for a new maintenance plan, fifteen thousand dollars on that.
Is that, is that for how many phones or is that for hours of work or?
That is for all, the whole phone system. That's a maintenance plan on all the whole phone system. It covers, uh, our switches, it covers all our, you know, if there's a, uh, doesn't cover the phones, if the phones break, we have to buy new phones. But if there's, if they do an upgrade to their, uh, software, it covers that upgrade to that software. They come in and upgrade their software.
So relatively speaking, what, what's the software cost? I mean, fifteen thousand, it sounds like a fairly large number. But you, is it fifty thousand if they upgraded the software and you didn't have the maintenance or is it five thousand? I mean, I, I guess I'm at a loss why the number is the size it is, don't have anything to compare it against.
They, we, in our current contract, we had the software agreement to upgrade. They charged us by accident, they billed us. It was six thousand dollars just to do that one upgrade and they did three upgrades last year.
Three upgrades?
To the, to their software.
Because of their fault or because we just needed more service or?
No, it's just up, it's just to make sure that, uh, they're up to date, that they're not being able to be, you know, uh, they're upgrading their security, they're upgrading a lot of things. It's like any software you buy, like the finance software, they come in and update their software for, for upgrades, for security, for added features, things of that sort, this is all part of that process.
Okay, it's, it just strikes me as a lot of money. I, I don't underst, I don't have anything to compare it against and so I guess I'm, I'm lost, but.
We can get you more details on, on what the whole maintenance agreement is because we just signed one for them. But that's, that's the cost that was associated with it. No, everything's, everything's computer-based, software-based and, and they're, they're changing everything. That, it's all going to the subscription-based software and it's, it's over the cost. The cost of the phone system was, I want to say between three and five hundred thousand dollars for the new phone system, with the new servers, the newer, you know, the new software and the new phones, everything was about three to five hundred thousand dollars.
So I mean, I'm not advocating changing because I don't want to spend three to five hundred thousand dollars for phones again, but you get trapped in a regard with this type of thing.
No, because Jonathan goes out there and, and, uh, deals with the individual company. Like right now, we have MyTel phones, he'll go and look at, there's, there's a third-party provider, TwinState, but he might just go to MyTel and say, what's a service contract going to cost me if I go directly to you? And things of that sort, so we do look at all those options. So we're not, we, we're not stuck with just TwinState, which it's whoever can service MyTel phones.
So we're not, it's not the guy who installed our phone that we're dealing with?
No, it could be the guy with, who installed it, but we're, we're not married to them, we can go to anybody who can work on a MyTel phone and give us a maintenance plan.
Yep, okay. All right, what else you have, Paul, unless somebody, any further questions on that?
Yeah, we can talk about.
Paul, hold on just a second, I think Lon might have.
The system we're talking about at this moment just covers this.
It's every phone in the town of Merrimack. It covers wastewater, it covers town hall, covers the police department, covers the highway garage, it covers solid waste. Every phone now is on this system and soon to be the library. Will also be on the same system.
Some cost savings there, I hope, by bringing them in?
Huge. They, uh, if you remember, they said seventy-five thousand dollars. I think, uh, all in all, said and done with the upgrade, it's going to be, it's about seventy-five hundred. Because all they had to do was buy the phones.
But when they, will it, will those additional funds be covered under this maintenance contract?
Yes.
Or will the maintenance contract have to be remediated because now we have more phones?
No, because all they had to do was buy the phones themselves. So if the phone breaks down at the library, they'll have to pay for a new phone out of their stuff. All the other software and everything is based on this fifteen thousand dollars.
Thanks. Good, all right, continue, Paul.
If we can go to, um, oh, one oh one, eight three five three, computer services. There is a significant amount of money, about fifty-two thousand dollars for, um, Office three sixty-five. Um, one is a security member, uh, two factor security authentication for fifteen. And then, um, Office three sixty-five is about thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, it's in this budget, we are still looking at, are we going that route? Are we going to stay with our server and see if we can get another year or two on the exchange server that we have? But, um, once again, three sixty-five is a subscription-based software and that's based on the number of emails that we have in town. And that would be the, um, the thirty-seven thousand dollar figure, almost thirty-eight thousand dollars is just for the amount of emails that we have. Um, so we are looking at what is the cost if we, uh, don't upgrade that? And we should have a better answer come, when we wrap everything up in, in a couple of weeks. We're trying to get those costs and to say that companies are getting back to us immediately would be an understatement. It's taking them longer time, used to, we used to go off a bid and they'd get back, right back to us a day later. Now it's taken them almost a week to get back to us on some of this stuff, so.
Good.
Okay. And then one last.
Hold on just a second.
And our equipment, our service and whatnot can handle Office three sixty-five? Because a lot of laptops, a lot of equipment can't.
That would be, um, most of our equipment is, is fairly new.
Okay.
Um, we replace it often, there'll be a couple pieces of equipment that will not be able to handle that and they'll be on the replacement schedule anyways that we have in the budgets of individual departments. I do come with some good news, um, if you look at oh, one oh one, eight three five nine. If you look at Civic Plus Software and Support, the eighteen thousand five hundred, um, that was an estimate that we got, um, to upgrade our current website. And, uh, in that current website, we went with a, um, personnel or a human resource function that we can send out applications and people can apply online. And then we were also looking at onboarding. Um, we, when we put the budget together, we were told that Civic H R is going away and they're being bought by another company. Um, so that was the cost that we got from the other company. However, Sharon and myself, we worked with a third-party and we got costs that are roughly about thirty-five hundred dollars to three thousand, uh, to five thousand dollars for that same human resource piece. Um, and then the website, we're, we're looking at upgrading our websites, but, uh, we don't believe those costs are there. So I feel there might be like a ten thousand dollar savings in that line item. And I'll be, we, when we get together back in December, I mean, December, in the end of January, when we, uh, start making decisions, the council starts making decisions on the budget, that would be something that I'd be proposing as well to the council. That, that we can reduce that line by about ten thousand dollars, if not more. We'll have some solid numbers by that time. And that's really all that I have in the budget for general government.
Ambulance billing, I, we don't bill out of our own office?
No, we do not, we use a third-party ComStar.
Wait, I thought they did the collections, I didn't realize they did the billing.
They did the billings and the collections.
Okay.
Because she need the, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I D C nine codes? And you need special training for I D C nine?
Yeah.
And certifications and they have all of that.
It's I C D nine, H I C P I C.
Yeah.
C P G.
All, all the fun stuff that goes along with it. But they have all that and they, they do our collections, um, with the third, with the, um, insurance companies and individuals. And then if they have to ninety to a hundred and twenty days, if they don't get, uh, resolution, they send it up to the finance department and the finance department, um, writes a letter to the individuals. And that catches a lot of people because they say, wait a second, I had insurance. Here you go, give us your insurance, we send it back down, they rebuild it to the insurance company. Or we say you were, uh, you got paid by a third-party insurer, you still owe the money to us because you've been reimbursed for this trip and then you lost the money. Um, and then after our, we go through several iterations with our letter, then we bring them over to small claims court depending on, uh, depending on what's going on. And usually, once we start doing that, um, people will pay or they'll, uh, they'll let us know that they cannot pay and they'll fill out an abatement form and those abatement forms are reviewed by Pat Murphy Welfare. But if they qualify, we'll write off the bill. If they don't qualify, if Pat says they can pay, we, uh, try to set up payment plans for them. We don't, we don't try to, you know, say if they owe us a thousand dollars, we don't say, you gotta pay us up all front. We'll set up a payment plan for, for these people, with a small interest rate.
So for classes, for the advertising.
Yes.
Um, there's a.
What number is it?
That is, I'm sorry, eight four twenty. There's an increase, um, is that because we're running more ads or has the cost of ads gone up?
Cost of ads have gone up significantly because paper, uh, paper market, uh, newspapers are going out. Um, Case Point, thanks for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Because, uh, remember a little while ago, we were approached by a citizen, asked us to put our public hearings in the Sunday Select. I have not seen a Sunday Select delivered to my house. And if I didn't work for the town of Merrimack, I probably never see a Sunday Select because the only reason why I see them is because they come in, get dropped off and we put them in our lobby for people to pick up. Um, there's a cost associated with that. We don't have a problem continuing with that cost, but the cost is like eighty-five dollars for a public hearing notice. Without it going to every home in town, it was a council decision to do that. Do we still want to do that? It's not huge, it's not a huge savings, but it's a savings.
What is the require, what is the legal requirement? Uh, I'm sure.
Legal requirement right now is, hopefully, when this con, senate, state will change this, but a legal requirement right now is a paper with general circulation in town. We only have one paper that has general circulation in town. National Telegraph doesn't deliver daily anymore. Sunday Select is part of the National Telegraph. An ad for the, in the National Telegraph is a hundred and twenty-four dollars. Union Leader is more expensive than that for an ad, for a public hearing notice. It's more expensive. I want to say, I've been dealing with the E P A and they asked me a question, I said, Union Leader? They said, what about the Sunday Select? I said, that's good, but it doesn't, it's, doesn't get circulated through town. I said, that's good, but it doesn't, it's, doesn't get circulated through town. But, uh, I think the Union Leader was over two hundred dollars for the same ad.
It just doesn't work.
So hopefully that, um, our, our representatives up there will allow us to start doing electronic as part of our and having account as it. What we do for public hearings, so everybody knows, is that we do push them in the paper. We do push the ad out. You'll see that. You get the, uh, you get the email from Becky. People can sign up for the public hearing notices. We'll push those out on, through our, our website. We'll also post them on our bulletin boards. We'll post them down at the library. Depending on how significant the public hearing is, we might even post it at the post office. So we are posting around town to let people know, um, that's there. Now with Facebook, we can even post the public hearings notices on Facebook if we wanted to go that route. So there, there are a lot of other means that we can get the information out there. Paper, print paper is going out.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
And it's getting very expensive to advertise in print paper because it, it is going out. And, um, even the online edition, you get, I get the online edition every day, which it shows the legal notices in there. But it's the same paper online as if it was printed.
So E-Alerts, is that where people go on the town website?
Yeah.
Which is at the bottom of the page.
Yep. We, we can move that around.
It would be good if the legislature revisited because it is a total waste in my estimation, unfortunately, cause I like newspapers. I don't get one anymore. Cause there's just not, there's nothing there. But I, uh, I think maybe we should start somehow a focus on that. It's not for a budget discussion, but maybe put it at the top of the page so it's more visible so people can see right away.
We, we can do the E-Alerts at the top of the page, but once again, legislation, RSA says
No, no, I know.
So we'd have to, we'd have to, you know, have the end door on that. But the big question is, 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 do we, do we still post to the Sunday Select? Cause it isn't like before where it was going to everybody's house and you'd flip through it real quick and say, oh, there's, oh, town of Merrimack is, the planning board's doing X, Y, Z. It's, gotta go find a paper.
It's dropped off in the end of the driveways?
No, not anymore.
Not anymore? Oh, then that answered the question then, that's-
No, it's not delivered to every person.
Couple of years.
They're, they're dropped off at certain locations. I don't even know what businesses in the town get them. I just know we get a stack of twenty-five of them every Friday. It's dropped off and we put them in, in the, um, in the lobby.
And do they get picked up?
Not every week. It depends. The lot, when Diane said the foot traffic in her department has decreased, it has decreased significantly. If there's long lines, they get picked up because people pick them up and read them while they're in line. But I've very rarely seen people walk out with this Sunday Select or that paper, um, out of there. I don't, I haven't been dealing with that, uh, for a while. I don't know if they get picked up, but I know that usually there's a stack of them by the end of the week when the new ones, they recycle. I'm looking at Sharon because it's one of her employees that is responsible for that table, so. They recycle them.
Because I think when we did that, there was a citizen here, I distinctly remember him.
Right.
And it was, I thought the Journal.
Well, yeah, the Journal turned into the Sunday Select.
So that was a few years ago. And we, and, and so I'm I get, I got that citizen's point at that time. I don't think it's necessary anymore.
I don't think it's valid anymore.
Right.
Not if it doesn't get sent to every house. That was his point.
And I think if I'm unders, I'm hearing the wording of the RSA correctly, it's a paper that is circulated. Well, it's not circulated.
It's not circulated.
But we were doing that as an extra.
We were doing that as an extra, so it wasn't like it was part of the law there, cause we're doing the Union Leader anyway because of the law.
Right, right.
You know, legislature. Perfect.
I, I got the asterisk next to it too.
Do you need some kind of a-
No, I, I think hearing what the town council is saying here, because this is kind of a, a budget workshop meeting that, um, I understand what you're saying and what we'll start, we'll start saving money on it. And if we get a lot of feedback where people are like, hey, how come we'll deal with it, we'll deal with it. We might just start advertising there again.
Okay.
That's really all that I had for general government.
Is everybody good on general government?
Yep.
All right, um, and revenues?
Revenues, I'm gonna pass off to Tom. However, before I do that, is the, uh, there's, there's a couple of big revenues. It's one that, um, our state legislatures, we're gonna have to ask them for, is the, um, New Hampshire Retirement System. We got a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars last year as one-time funding to help offset the police and fire, uh, New Hampshire Retirement, um, which was fine. We appreciate it. But it also puts us in a hole the next year because now we have to come up just at one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. That's three or four cents on the tax rate. Then now we had to find savings throughout our appropriation side of the house. The savings. For us, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, three cents, it is a lot of money. But our school district lost millions of dollars. Two million, two million dollars, and they were basically on that same bill. So we need, we're gonna have probably some help or ask the council when they do testify on this, if there, if there is a bill for this or to testify, we might ask some of the council to write a letter or recommendation or to go up there and testify on it. But that was one of the big things that, that really stood out this year is that that was not written into law. It was a sunset provision that was put in. Um, they just zeroed out many years ago when they were having financial difficulties up at the state. They used to cover thirty percent.
Right, I remember that.
Thirty percent. And then they zeroed it down, down to zero, and then they brought it back. What was seven and a half? Seven percent this year, so.
And what do we pay? What is the percent for police and fire that we pay? It's like thirty?
We paid thirty, thirty percent.
Thirty percent?
Thirty percent, roughly thirty percent for both of them now.
I just wanna say, I think this is a great example of the state downshifting costs to towns, to local taxpayers. And sometimes when our state says we are so great and we don't increase taxes, yes, we may not increase them at state level, but we cut them out of our bills at the state and we shift them to towns. And this past budget is an example of where we're at with, you know, having to make up that money and that's local taxpayers.
Barbara?
Yeah, you know, it's a darned if you do and darned if you don't, because if this was a corporation or a business and you had retirees coming up, well, the business itself is responsible for funding the retirement fund, if that's the way that works. This, I, I, this, I'm not sure the state should be responsible for funding retirement for our employees.
Well, see, the-
Seeing how we're incorporated into ourselves.
Business, you would make those decisions as a business. We as a business didn't have an opportunity to make that decision.
Like I say, we're stuck with a statewide or a state retirement fund.
That they mismanaged should be in jail for, and they're not. And so their, their mismanagement, because in ninety-three or four, they knew there were problems and they still did nothing about it until oh, seven, when Fannie and Freddie collapsed and made a nightmare for everybody.
And they I was in the VA, in the federal government. The year before I was, was in the VA, they switched retirement plans from a defined benefit to a 403B. I got in on the 403B. Everybody who was in the retirement system the year before was still in the defined benefit. What the state did is they said, everybody who's vested, you're still, you're vested, you're okay. This stuff will count towards your retirement. Everybody who wasn't vested, too bad, so sad. So we had people that were nine years and eleven months that the date hit, they weren't vested. Here you go, now you gotta do everything. Um, but the problem is, is there's a big problem with the, the plan itself. It was what, four billion dollars underfunded at one point?
I thought it was something more than that. I thought it was closer to ten, but you know?
It was, it got to, it got to like four billion when we started doing that. I don't know what it was last year, but it's still underfunded.
Yeah, we're still digging out.
And, and, and we can get into philosophical debate on this all night long. I just don't understand why, and I think I'm pretty smart when it comes to finances. I just don't understand why. You set a rate at thirty-one percent for fire, one year, and then you decrease it to next year, and then only two years later, you're gonna increase it to thirty-three percent again. I, that, that's my point. I don't understand why at that point, you know, you, you're underfunded already. And I understand you wanna, oh, help the communities and, and things of that sort by, by downshifting it for those two years. But you're increasing it the following two years by double, you know, twenty, twenty, like the police went up twenty-five percent one year. They shifted it down and then the following two years, they, they jacked it up twenty-five percent. And, you know, I understand that it's all actuaries and things of that sort, and we can get into a huge financial debate over this. And I'm grateful that they do lower the cost because it, it helps the taxpayers of Merrimack. But I'm just worried about in two years, what it's gonna be when that shoe drops.
Needs to be steady.
It, it needs to be constant. That's, you know, a floor and a, a floor and a ceiling and a floor with some of this stuff, but-
Sorry about the jail comment. They just annoy me.
But like I said, we can get into a huge philosophical debate. That, that is one part of it. But I did wanna bring it to your attention because that is, that is the significant revenue loss this year. And Tom will talk about some significant, and the other significant revenue loss that we're projecting is heard today, um, beds are gonna raise interest again. And when that happens, building's gonna slow down. The building slows down and, and, you know, that's building permits. So next year, we reduced it about sixty-five thousand dollars, only because we know we have some developments in play and we have some, uh, large buildings that are going on. On, uh, you know, throughout the planning board process that will probably be built next year. But, uh, we're, we're starting to pull back the reins on, on that, um, the building permits as well. Automobiles. It's, um, we feel we're confident with our number, uh, due to the fact that
New people.
New people coming into town. And the cost of automobiles, we have not seen, even though they say they're coming down, they're, they're not really coming down. The used car market's supposed to be getting better and they're, they're supposed to be coming down, but, you know, I haven't seen you know, a lot of, a lot of savings in cars and trucks and things of that sort. When you're looking at a GMC pickup truck that starts at sixty-five thousand dollars now, that was forty-five, two years ago. So, you know, I even, I had a buddy of mine call me up and says, I'm in a lease. They wanna give me X number over my, what I owe on it. I said, okay. And what's the new truck gonna cost you? He says, well, new truck, same as mine, is seventy-five thousand dollars. What should I do? I said, buy it. Buy it right now. And his interest rate was almost nine percent on it. So I don't see, that's why I'm thinking we're, we're gonna be good with automobiles, and that was just one example of it. I've talked enough.
Wow, remember that date, okay?
Yeah, remember that date.
So we, we did have this review of, of revenues about three weeks ago when we initially presented the budget and, and nothing's changed really, but to recap, um, there are a few areas where we're, uh, budgeting for an increase in, in revenues. One of the more significant of which is, uh, solid waste revenue. The, and, and I know we've had a number of discussions about tipping fees and we're gonna have some more discussions about tipping fees, but the tipping fee increase that we enacted back in March of two thousand and twenty-two, wasn't really reflected in the prior year's budget. So now that's fully in. We've also seen an increase in, uh, in, in, in the volume of, of trash, um, subject to those fees. So we're forecasting an increase of a little over a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in solid waste revenue in this, uh, this budget. Interest income on, on our, uh, cash balances is, is the most significant increase in, in budget revenues. We're looking at about, an increase of about two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, um, from what, uh, we had as an adjusted budget figure in the prior year. Rates have steadily increased and we've, we've seen that, although there's a lag, we do see that reflected in the, in the rates that we're earning on our, uh, investable cash, so. That's, that's some bit of good news to offset some of the, uh, some of the increases on the appropriation side. There's also an increase in, uh, revenue related to the COSAP grant for police. That's the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program. That was, um, approved and accepted in the, in the prior fiscal year. It's an increase in revenues, but it's offset by increased expenses. So that, that's really a wash. In terms of decreases in projected revenues, um, Paul mentioned a couple of these. Building permits, we're bringing down our estimate by, uh, a little over sixty-four thousand dollars. As Paul said, we expect that the increase in interest rates is going to drive down the level of, uh, of new projects. And we'll, we'll see that reflected in, uh, in our building permit revenue. We did have the, the hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar, uh, one-time revenue from the state, uh, to contribute towards the New Hampshire Retirement for, uh, for our police and firefighters. And being a one-time payment, we're not including that in the, in the current year budget, although as Paul said, it would be real nice if, uh, if that happened again, but we'll have to see if the state has a, a lot of extra money to, uh, to, to spread around this year as they, as, or next year as they have, uh, uh, this past year.
Is that the, uh, is that the thirty-three, fifty-nine other state revenues that you're talking about, or?
Uh, yes, that's where that-
Because you have a hundred and twelve in there, which is way up from the average of the last five years. I'm just wondering.
That's the COSAP, that's that COSAP-
That's that COSAP, okay. They're not spelled out here, so they're not. And I was looking all over for where that number was.
Yeah. So that's-
Okay.
That's what's in there. We're also looking at a reduction in current use taxes. For a couple of reasons. One is there's not a lot of land left in the town that, uh, is in current use. That could be taken out, uh, and the increase in interest rates affecting, um, new development means that there's, uh, less likely that, uh, that vacant land would be developed and, and taken out. So we're bringing that number down by, by fifty thousand dollars. We're budgeting flat on auto registrations, meals and rooms taxes, and highway block grant. You know, we, we talk a lot about auto registrations and Diane, uh, gave you the anecdotal evidence that, uh, that foot traffic is, is down in her department significantly. We, we're not seeing that reflected in the revenue numbers, um, to this point. We continue to be on pace. Primarily because of the new residents coming into town and, and registering vehicles. So to this point, things, uh, things look good as far as that goes. As I, as I always say, it's a number that we, we pay very close attention to and we'll see. The good news is with these revenues, we've got another shot at it. We have the ability to revise these numbers, uh, in the fall, right before the, the tax setting process. So that we'll have a lot better information to, to base those revised estimates on, uh, when we, we get to that point. But to this point, we're, we're comfortable with those. Uh, meals and room taxes, um, you know, the state will tell us in, in the fall when we're, uh, going through that process, what those numbers will be. And, uh, highway block grant is already kind of, uh, uh, planned out, so I don't expect to see, uh, any significant changes in, uh, in, in those numbers, barring something very unforeseen. So that is, um, basically the picture on revenues. But if there's any specific questions- But if there's any specific questions, I'll do my best to give you an answer.
You know, there are a few. I'm not sure of the actual number. Lots that the town owns, and these look like maybe property had been taken back or maybe the town had taken ownership of. I know that there's one off of Bedford Road on one of those side streets. There's another one up past, um, Pheasant Run, and it looks like they're just a lot. You know, there's nothing on them. They're just wooded. Why do we hold on to those? Why, uh, why haven't we sold those off? Because it's just one lot. It's not like it's a big conservation land or multiple acres.
Process and got rid of a lot of property years ago, but I think Paul.
About ten years ago, more than that now. Uh, we did a big auction. And there was a, a committee from counselors that were put together with the town manager at the time. And they went through and listed all these properties and they went on. Some of these lots are there because that's, uh, we have easements on them, so they can't be built on, like drainage easement or sewer easement, things of that sort. The one that comes to mind is the one on Sarah Drive. I think it's two Sarah Drive, around that area on Sarah Drive. That we actually sold at auction. When the purchaser went to buy it, we found out that we had drainage or sewer easements running through the middle of the property. So it was, we bought the property back. But there was a, there's a book in the town council chamber, actually, that has all, every piece of, uh, town old property that we have taken over, um, with notes on it. Some of those other parcels could be for fields, depending on how big they are and things, future expansion for athletic fields and things of that sort. It might be a good idea for the council to get back together and look at them one more time now that we're eleven years later. But, uh, that's, that's a council decision on.
Valley View was sold at that point. And I was thinking it was almost impossible to put anything there and they, they went through a blasting mission. I don't know how much they paid for the land, but they blasted out holes for foundations and everything. I don't know if they've continued to build.
There was a couple of them there. I know, uh, Joppa Road. Down at the end of Joppa Road by Bedford Road. Down that way, there was three or four of those homes on that end of Joppa Road, those lots that were, we thought were wet. But they came in and they were able to build on them now because they, uh, didn't need a septic system anymore. They were on sewer or whatever. So they were able to hook up to whatever they needed there. So I know we sold a couple of them, um, during the auction. Valley View was another one. There was about ten to fifteen parcels that, that were sold during the auction at that time.
And you're at the ones that weren't, there was a reason for it. So we should take a look at the list.
Because we're not making money on.
I think if that were able to be sold, they were sold. We have them, there's a reason why we have them.
Well, I mean, if we have easements on them, we don't wanna let those go, but.
But it would be listed, I think.
Wouldn't, yeah, wouldn't hurt to just.
Or could just have been a simple four, future drainage easement.
Yes.
That he listed that way, right?
Yeah, the, the ones up in the
That's right.
Pine Hill Shores, there's two or three lots that they were talking about. We, we own those and that's why we kept them is because of potential drainage. Whatever we needed up there. But we can take a look at it. There is a, there is a, there's a binder in, in the town council. It's on that bookshelf.
Worth looking at, though.
Yeah, to relook at them, for sure.
All right. Anybody got anything further on revenues? You all set? Very good. Thank you.
Before we move on, um, I know that we were talking next Wednesday, the eleventh, of potentially bringing back, um, I'm having a meeting to discuss the, uh, single stream recycling tipping fees, um, and overhead. Is that's, I know we were holding that day in case today we got snow, which thank God we didn't. But does the council wanna meet that day to discuss that, uh, have a special meeting on that day to discuss the tipping fees and the, the overhead for, for single stream? Or do you wanna?
We hold.
We, we can hold because it's a lot different now. Kyle's last day is tomorrow. I dusted off my cost accounting book and figured out what semi-variable and fixed variable and all the variable costing is now. But, uh, without having, you know, we, we can, we can present to you what it is and we but I, I, my suggestion would be to hold off a little bit longer and see what NRPC is. I could tell you one thing. I have a spreadsheet and the cost go from a hundred and, almost a hundred and four dollars a ton for recycling, which happened in November of twenty twenty-two, all the way down to us receiving a dollar eighty-two a ton in the summer. So that's how much variability there is with single stream recycling right now and the commodities that go along with it.
When, when did we receive a dollar eighty-two a ton? I mean, recently or fifteen years ago?
No, this year.
This year.
That is a crazy swing. I think in the beginning, we were making about twenty bucks a ton, I thought.
In the beginning, yeah.
Beginning, yeah. It was a money maker.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Actually, I said, it was a dollar eighty and we received that in May, May of twenty twenty-two.
And then September went.
And, uh, October was at a hundred and three dollars and eighty-four cents. Last January was at a hundred and nine dollars and twenty-five cents. So we went from a hundred and nine dollars all the way down to we're receiving a dollar eighty in May. And in April, we received a dollar fourteen a ton. So that's how much the commodity price from a hundred and nine all the way down, and then it's going right back up now. And then other months, like in June, we were at five, we paid five dollars and, five dollars and twenty-one cents a ton. So the swings on, on the average per ton that we're paying is just like an EKG. It, it's wild. And we do have some fixed costs that are associated with the, the tonnage and semi-variable cost that are, that are associated with too. And without having a new DPW director, I'd hate to come in and say, okay, we're getting rid of single stream and what do we do with the employees? And not have somebody there to be able to have that discussion.
Implications.
Implications of it. I can tell you what some of the implications would be. Is that we'd probably need somebody because both of our tractor trailer trucks taking that twelve hundred, thirteen hundred tons out of the recycling system and putting them into the trash. We'd probably need both of our tractor trailer trucks on the road almost constantly. So that means we need to take one of those recycling attendants and possibly upgrade the position. And is that us, there isn't a big cost savings there. We might lose a part-timer. Because the recycling attendants just don't sit in the recycle building. We still have steel, we still have tires, we still have refrigerators, we still have all the other stuff that we have to, that we recycle besides what's in that building on top of it. So we, you know, I don't know what the implications or what the savings would be, and I would just think that it'd be unfair knowing that we're getting a new DPW director in here. That could be one of the questions that I could ask him. In an interview or the councilman ask him when they interview him, or her, him or her. So I would say that we'll leave it at a hundred and fifty dollars a ton. We're gonna break even for what we're paying. We're gonna lose money on the salary side of the house, but those are some costs anyways because we've been paying for the salaries for years. So that would be my recommendation until we can come up and, and, and do something and, and, you know, come up with a decision and, and maybe in June or July, we, we have this discussion again and we make a determination then. But that would be my recommendation to the town council.
Works for me. Works for me.
Nope, no meeting on the eleventh. All right, so we'll just meet on the twelfth.
That's what I'm doing right now. Oh, yes, uh, um, we're gonna meet tomorrow morning.
We're not gonna meet on the eleventh.
Can we do, can we do eleven? Cause I, I have a town senate committee meeting at noon and that was.
Just a continued discussion on.
Very good. All right. Well, I just want everybody to know that Paul, the pessimist he is, said we'd be out of here by nine thirty. That's what he told me this morning, so. Unless anybody wants to continue.
I'm glad he didn't make that public because it would have cursed us.
Yeah, I don't have much to talk about. I can keep going. So, no further ado. Launched second by Barbara. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstained. Thank you.